Thank you.
Good evening to all the empty chairs. Welcome to the October 27, 2016 zoning board of appeals meeting. All members are present with the exception of Nate Ossiani and Dan Cronin. Before we start, I'd just like to introduce Mr. Chris Olson, who is now our newest member on the board. I'd like to thank Mr. Olson for willing enough to come and join the board and help us with this process. So, thank you, Mr. Olson, and welcome to the board. If you have anything you want to say, now's the time to say it. If not...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I look forward to the opportunity.
Okay. Alright. So, to the agenda. Okay. We're gonna start with the meeting minutes of July 21, 2016, which was the executive session. Now, I know that you all got a copy of the minutes that were... There were some changes. You all got a chance to read them. Does anybody have any objections to the changes that were made?
No.
Okay.
No.
Alright. So, with that, I'll take a motion.
And I'm recusing myself as I wasn't in any of these meetings.
Motion to approve July 21, 2016 revised executive session. Executive session minutes as revised.
Second?
Yes.
Second. Here in your... Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, those are approved. Okay, Toby? Those are approved.
That's the executive...
Alright. Now, September 15, 2016. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve September 15, 2016.
Do I have a second?
Regular session minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. September 22, 2016, training session.
Motion to approve September 22, 2016, training session minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And don't forget that we have... Mr. Olson is accusing... recusing himself from these votes, okay? Alright.
Thank you.
Okay. September 22, 2016, special meeting.
Motion to approve September 22, 2016, special meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With one recuse, okay? September 29, 2016, special meeting.
Motion to approve September 29, 2016, special meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, October 6, 2016, special meeting.
Motion to approve October 6, 2016, special meeting minutes.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna skip B for right now and go right to C. Approval of step increases and retroactive pay for Mrs. Goldstein.
Motion to approve step increase and retroactive pay for Ms. Goldstein.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I voted on that one, aye.
You voted on that too, okay.
So, this we need a motion?
Yeah, because we have to pass it on to the town accountant. That's one of the things that she required when we do this. She needed a copy of the minutes saying that we voted and approved it, and she also needed a copy of the vote sheets. So, we'll pass that on to her. Okay, while Raj is filling out that, discuss and approve the ZBA meeting dates for 2017. Did everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, these are on the third... This is the third Thursday of the month, okay? With the exception of December, because the December one is like three days before Christmas. So, I just... Unless anybody has any objections to it, I put down that we wouldn't have a meeting unless there was something super extraordinary that came upon us. So...
No objection.
For December?
Of next year.
Okay.
Does anybody have any problems with that?
Nope.
No.
Okay, so it's okay, approved by everybody? Okay, so it's approved by... I would suggest that you just kinda mark this down on your calendar so that you'll know. It's not gonna...
They will all start at 7:15?
Yep, yep, unless otherwise noted.
Okay.
But Toby will let us know in advance if something has to go before then, okay? And it's always the third Thursday, so it doesn't affect...
You are great.
Your minutes, your meetings.
December though, there's going to be no meeting?
No meeting. Okay. Now, the other thing too is, and I know Raj had a question about this. Charlie, if you have a question about this, that's fine, and Chris. Okay. Discuss and vote on possible cancellation of December 2016 meeting, okay?
The thing is, I have no problem in canceling December 2016 meeting, but if there is something to be...
Okay.
Taken care of, alright, so I do like to have the meeting.
Okay, so we'll wait till November, the November meeting, and we'll see if there's anything that's gonna be progressive, okay? So, Toby, with the number... The letter E here, to discuss and vote on possible cancellation, we're not gonna take a vote. We're gonna push this off until the November meeting.
So, it should be on that agenda?
So, it should be on that agenda, okay? Alright. Alright. Now, miscellaneous mail and paperwork that need signature. What do you got for us? I know one of the things is your timesheet, and that's the most important thing. Right, Chris?
Amen.
Oh, that was great. I didn't tell him these. You could do this Sunday if you wanted to. I didn't tell him to last page.
Okay, that's fine.
So...
I'll do it on Sunday.
Yeah, we'll just... And then I have this VHB.
Okay. Alright, we have an invoice for VHB. This is for the project at 94 North Main Street. It's for $174.40. Okay, so...
And the accounting confirmed that that's all that we owe, so...
Okay. Yeah, because they took care of the other... the other thing, okay?
Okay.
Alright, and just along that note with VHB, it was brought to my attention by Wayne Amico, who happens to be the engineer from VHB. There was a little situation with Mr. Ali and his project down there. Something about the stormwater detention and filtration basis for building A. I guess it wasn't being done right. There's some pictures.
I'm sorry.
You're sorry? Okay. Alright, so we'll just keep that in mind. I talked to town administrator this morning about if she heard anything from MHP about Mr. Ali's, you know, approval for, you know, from MHP for the funding and stuff. She has not heard anything. She believes that they haven't... They had until... They said that it would be the 28th of October, which is tomorrow. If we don't hear anything by the first of the month, I will reach out to MHP and see where that stands as far as, you know, if it's got approved or not. I do know that Mr. Ali has applied for a building permit with their building inspector, and in accordance with MHP, we are not to issue him... The board will be the one that will inform the building inspector on whether, you know, when it's time to issue the building permit for the project. And MHP told me that under no circumstances do we issue him a building permit until they send us an approval saying that his funding... They have approved his funding, okay? So, the building inspector knows that, so there's not gonna be any building... Building permit issued until we have confirmation from MHP that it's been approved.
Oh, I can't believe this. They're the ones that dictated that we should have all these houses and stuff like that, and now they're not putting up the money.
Well, it's not that they're not putting up money, they're just delaying. We did get an email saying that they would have a decision by the end of October, okay? So, we're just waiting for that. That's why we approved his extension for two months, because with the understanding that they would have the decision to us, you know, the approval to us. So, once that comes through, then we can go... We can move on, move ahead, okay? Toby, is there any other miscellaneous mail or paperwork?
Okay, this... I have to make up an invoice for this one. This is the bill for...
Okay, we got a bill today from town council. It's for $2,800... How much is it, Toby?
$2,808.
Okay, and we're gonna pay that through our...
The unencumbered...
Unencumbered, from which there is money in there to pay for it, okay? This is all the stuff. This is just... This bill is for all the work that town council has done on the 40B project for us, okay? So, Toby will take care of that and we'll send it out. Anything else?
I'm just double checking with this retro pay...
Okay.
That nothing else... Nothing else had to be signed, right?
Nope.
Other than a vote sheet. Yeah, I'm not seeing anything either.
All she needs is a copy of the minutes and the vote sheet. So, the copy of the minutes will be at the next meeting, and then as soon as we sign... Approve those and sign them, then you can send the copy of the minutes and the copy of the vote sheet to her, okay? And that'll be taken care of. Okay. Unless that's anything... Okay. The only other thing is, is that we did... We do have a letter here. Let me see if... Okay. It has to do with the special permit that Marino and Flag for the land across the street from Flag that they wanted to use, okay? I'm gonna read this in. On October 2 of 2016, we received a letter. This letter shall serve as notice that the application submitted on behalf of Flag RV by Michael V. Marino, Rose Marino, and Brian Marino is being withdrawn. After much review and consideration, Mr. Flag has decided not to move forward with the motion for a sales lot on this parcel. We kindly request that you remove our petition from the October schedule, and we thank you for your time and consideration, okay? So, what we have to do now is we need to vote to accept withdrawal of the special permit petition by Marino, ETL, Flag RV at Zero West Boylston Street without prejudice. Do I have a motion?
Motion to vote to accept withdrawal of special permit petition.
Second.
By Marino, ETL, Flag RV, Zero West Boylston Street without prejudice.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 4-0. Alright, and Toby's gonna write up, and then I'll sign it. Alright, so now, we got 15 minutes. Does anybody have anything that they want to bring up?
No, nothing.
Okay, this is... You all got a copy of this. It's a... It's the decision that we made for DHJ Incorporated. That was the special permit that they were looking for to... The minimum lot requirement for the property at 76 Maple Street, okay? And so, the decision has been made. The town clerk has received it. The petitioner has been informed.
Yes, yeah, all the abotters got theirs.
Okay, and the abotters got all of theirs. So, this is just to show you that it's been done and it's been passed on, okay? Anything else anybody needs to discuss or wants to bring up, anything? No? Okay.
Yeah, I wanna know why these two guys didn't show up. What happened?
I... We're gonna... One of them had to work. He had to fly to DC for work, and I don't know where Mr. Cronin is. He has not entered his home, okay? We'll look into that. Alright, so what we're gonna do is, the next thing is, we have a public hearing, and the public hearing starts at 7:45. It's now 7:30. So, we're gonna take a recess until 7:45. Okay, you can shoot. Alright, we're off the record now. All right, we're off the record now.
Good.
On the agenda is a public hearing, okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes?
Um, consultation with the client, knowing that there isn't a full complement of five members here tonight, we ask that you don't open this public hearing, continue it till your next available meeting date.
Okay.
When you will have a full five-member panel available to hear.
Will you send us something, asking, you know, requesting that you'd like us to continue till next?
Yes.
Okay, just make sure that Toby gets a copy of it.
Sure, yeah, if you could just send an email so we, but, uh, because of date, deadline purposes and everything, so.
Yep. If I may, for administrative purposes, do you believe will be heard on November seventeenth, your next meeting will be?
I will make sure if I have to drag people here.
(laughing).
Okay?
Okay.
I'll make sure of it.
Great.
All right, I'm sorry for the inconvenience.
Okay.
All right, you are scheduled to go to the planning board on?
November ninth.
November ninth. Okay. Um, that's not gonna have any bias continuing our part of it?
No, I, I don't think so.
I don't believe you have an order requirement. Some communities require you to get things in certain orders. I don't believe that applies here.
Right, I, I, I think that's correct. Do, do you mind if I?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, so, so again, I was thinking, you know, if there were a full five-member board here, including one of our associate members, that all along I was planning on recusing myself for, for this because I am the chair of the planning board.
Right.
That said, because of the issues that we're having with, with getting a full five-member board here, um, I, I would be willing to be one of those five on November seventeenth if you're comfortable with that. Um, if not, um, then, you know, we'll, we'll have to do what we can to make sure everyone else can, can make it. But just to put that out there.
Sure. I mean, unless there's some conflicts, um, that you have beyond just being the chair of the planning board.
That's it.
I don't believe it's disqualifying. I'll, I'll take a look, and I appreciate you.
Yeah, I just wanna get that out there, so.
Right, I appreciate that. But, um, I don't, I don't believe that there's a conflict, um, if there isn't another reason to recuse yourself that would prevent you from serving.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't believe it rises to the level of a conflict either. I just, you know, to the extent that that could be avoided, I think it would be beneficial. But if we can't, then, uh, I, I, we can proceed, uh, with, with, with who, you know, whichever five, uh, members that, that we have at that time.
Right.
Okay, and you'll just, you'll go to the planning board like scheduled on the ninth of November?
Yes.
Do what, what you need to do there, and then come back to us on the seventeenth, and we'll make sure that we have five people here, and we'll, we'll hear this.
Right.
Like I said, if you could just make sure that you send something to Toby, you know, request, you know, requesting that, letting us know. Like I said, I apologize for the inconvenience. Um, I'm sorry that your client had to come all this distance just to hear no. I'm sorry.
These things happen.
Okay, so we'll not, we're not gonna open the hearing, and we'll just wait till the seventeenth of November. We'll see you then at, um, seven forty-five, Toby?
Um, yeah, if we're gonna do anything else.
At seven forty-five, is that, now, is your client gonna have to come back from New York?
Um, we'll discuss it. They may, they may not, we'll discuss it.
'Cause if you need, I mean, we can go to eight, we can set the meeting for eight o'clock if that's gonna be more, you know, a much better timeframe for you, whatever you decide.
Uh, if you're used to seven forty-five, it's fine.
Well, we're trying to com, we're trying to accommodate you, because like I said, your client's coming from, from out of state. So just wanna make sure, 'cause of course, then in November, we don't know what the weather's gonna be like either, so.
Correct.
How about if we just set it for eight o'clock?
Fine, that's great.
Okay? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. All right, so.
Okay, thank you.
So the public hearing is not gonna be held, is now continued until November, postponed until November seventeenth, at which time hopefully we'll have five members here. And.
I mean, we have to get.
Right, and we're gonna, and they're gonna send us a letter requesting that, that this be continued, or be postponed until?
Toby, I have a suggestion. Maybe next time, you know, maybe write a small format continuation.
What's that?
Just write some of those things, you know, like, and then, you know, we'll get the signature on, write it down.
Actually, I have one. That's the one that town.
Because, you know. But let, let him send us one. And then we'll just go, 'cause we didn't even open up this hearing.
Right, so I think that's an important distinction.
Right, so the time doesn't start until we actually open the hearing. So let them send us that they postpone until November seventeenth, okay? Any other further business that anybody needs to discuss?
If, if you didn't get it, please remind them.
Okay. Any other business? Charlie?
Hey, this is, we gotta look for some more people. Christopher, it's good that you're here, but we can't keep these people waiting, you know? We're gonna get some subs in here.
Yep, I agree.
Talk to some guy that says, everybody's gotta get a guy that is, doesn't wanna do it maybe every, every meeting, but would be able to jump in and help us out a little bit, you know?
Yep.
This is embarrassing, you know?
All right, we're gonna work, we're gonna work on that.
I'm not criticizing you.
No, no, I understand, Charlie, and I agree wholeheartedly with you. We, we definitely need to do something, because this is not fair to, to the petitioner, you know? But we did not start, we did not open this hearing, so the time, our timeframe won't start until, till we actually open it up, so that'll start on November seventeenth.
So everybody is gonna go out and, and find a sub for you. So if you, you can't make it.
If you have any lost souls in the, um, in the animals, then bring them, make a sub.
Yeah.
All he has to do is woof, all he has to do is woof. We'll tell them when.
They don't wanna do this, you know? It's, it's, uh, time-consuming and stuff.
Also, Toby, one other request. Maybe you could, if you get this, you know, somebody's not coming, maybe, do you mind and reach out to the associate members?
I haven't been able to get a hold of Dan.
Yeah, she tried to call Dan.
Did you? Okay, thank you.
So let me just, just ask a question, and just out of ignorance, I just don't, I just don't know the answer to this. Is it usually, as a matter of course, that the associate members, uh, generally show up at every meeting?
That's correct.
Or they generally?
No, they show up at every meeting.
Okay, okay.
That's correct.
All right, so today's just an anomaly?
Yeah, when I, when I first got on the board, when we first, Mr. Benson and all them, when we first got on the board, we were all here.
Okay.
Can we do the motion to adjourn?
Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Sir.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Because I don't want it on the TV.
Yep, yep.
This is not a chit-chat on the TV.